Roll call, Commissioner Crevel.
Here.
Mr. Langren.
Here.
Mayor Holtzman.
Yes.
I have the second reading as the public hearing of ordinance 2016-11 to amending ordinance 2016-03 establishing 2016 salaries, compensation, and salary ranges of officers and employees of the city of Venter City and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances heretofore adopted, the provisions of which are inconsistent here with.
This is a public hearing. Do we have anyone in the public that would like to speak on this? And we'll close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Crevel.
Yes.
Mr. Langren.
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman.
Yes.
I have the second reading of public hearing of ordinance 2016-12 to amending chapter 107 of the Venter City Code, drones and unmanned aircraft.
This is also a public hearing. Do we have anyone in the public that would like to speak on this? No?
I think we'll mention during this, we did receive some correspondence from two different entities, or were they the same entity?
One.
Okay, I got an email today from maybe the second one. They're different drone organizations or unmanned aircraft organizations. They asked me to read their letter into the record. If they're not here to answer questions, I'm not going to read their letter into the record. It's in the files as they requested. So, that's where it'll stay.
I believe the one is from a commercial drone company, and they were talking about commercial drones, and this does not have anything to do with commercial.
Right.
And by my way, we looked at it. We got the letter as well. And they, you could, after the FAA releases their new regulations, assuming they come out on August 29th, I don't think they're going to change much, but at some point in the future, as more of these are coming out, look at it and see if you want it defined recreationally.
Sure.
This is, they're talking about commercials, Jim said it's correct. It's fine. We looked at it, we went back to make sure that what they were claiming, but we have said anybody can, they can do whatever they want, just not on public property. If they want to do something on public property, they have a mechanism in which to get it through the chief. So, we've all read the letter, and everybody has it in the files. I didn't see the email you got today, but we reviewed it, did the research to make sure that there wasn't any inconsistencies with what they were saying. I think, so we're good.
Perfect. Thank you.
Do I have a second to close the public hearing?
Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Crevel.
Yes.
Mr. Langren.
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman.
Yes.
I have the final reading and adoption of ordinance 2016-11. Do I have a motion for the adoption?
Motion to adopt, final reading, motion for final reading and adoption of ordinance 2016-11.
Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Crevel.
Yes.
Mr. Langren.
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman.
Yes.
Do I have a motion for the final reading and adoption of ordinance 2016-12?
Motion to final reading and adoption of ordinance 2016-12.
Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Crevel.
Yes.
Mr. Langren.
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman.
Yes.
Roll call, Commissioner Crevel.
Yes.
Mr. Langren.
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman.
Yes.
I have the second reading as the public hearing of ordinance 2016-11 to amending ordinance 2016-03 establishing 2016 salaries, compensation, and salary ranges of officers and employees of the city of Venter City and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances heretofore adopted, the provisions of which are inconsistent here with.
This is a public hearing. Do we have anyone in the public that would like to speak on this? And we'll close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Crevel.
Yes.
Mr. Langren.
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman.
Yes.
I have the second reading of public hearing of ordinance 2016-12 to amending chapter 107 of the Venter City Code, drones and unmanned aircraft.
This is also a public hearing. Do we have anyone in the public that would like to speak on this? No?
I think we'll mention during this, we did receive some correspondence from two different entities, or were they the same entity?
One.
Okay, I got an email today from maybe the second one. They're different drone organizations or unmanned aircraft organizations. They asked me to read their letter into the record. If they're not here to answer questions, I'm not going to read their letter into the record. It's in the files as they requested. So, that's where it'll stay.
I believe the one is from a commercial drone company, and they were talking about commercial drones, and this does not have anything to do with commercial.
Right.
And by my way, we looked at it. We got the letter as well. And they, you could, after the FAA releases their new regulations, assuming they come out on August 29th, I don't think they're going to change much, but at some point in the future, as more of these are coming out, look at it and see if you want it defined recreationally.
Sure.
This is, they're talking about commercials, Jim said it's correct. It's fine. We looked at it, we went back to make sure that what they were claiming, but we have said anybody can, they can do whatever they want, just not on public property. If they want to do something on public property, they have a mechanism in which to get it through the chief. So, we've all read the letter, and everybody has it in the files. I didn't see the email you got today, but we reviewed it, did the research to make sure that there wasn't any inconsistencies with what they were saying. I think, so we're good.
Perfect. Thank you.
Do I have a second to close the public hearing?
Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Crevel.
Yes.
Mr. Langren.
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman.
Yes.
I have the final reading and adoption of ordinance 2016-11. Do I have a motion for the adoption?
Motion to adopt, final reading, motion for final reading and adoption of ordinance 2016-11.
Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Crevel.
Yes.
Mr. Langren.
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman.
Yes.
Do I have a motion for the final reading and adoption of ordinance 2016-12?
Motion to final reading and adoption of ordinance 2016-12.
Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Crevel.
Yes.
Mr. Langren.
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman.
Yes.
Roll call, to the public, any comments on the items listed below, number 12 through 14? Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Crevel.
Yes.
Mr. Langren.
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman.
Yes.
I have the introduction of ordinance 2016-14. It's an ordinance amending chapter 197 Streets and Sidewalks of the Venter City Code dealing with revocable licenses for residential encroachments. Do I have a motion to introduce ordinance 2016-14?
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Crevel.
Yes.
Mr. Langren.
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman.
Yes.
I have the introduction of ordinance 2016-15. It's an ordinance amending chapter 171-7 Hours of Construction of the Code of the City of Venter.
Motion to introduce ordinance 2016-15.
Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Crevel.
Yes.
Mr. Langren.
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman.
Yes.
With the exception of resolutions 2016-133 and 2016-137, do you wish to adopt the other resolutions by consent?
Yes, so move.
Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Crevel.
Yes.
Mr. Langren.
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman.
Yes.
I have resolution number 2016-133. It's to place the public question on the November 8, 2016 ballot regarding the sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption on premise in restaurants.
I'd like to make a comment. We did receive the required petitions. However, we did find out that we did not need the petitions. The governing body has the power to put a question upon the ballot in the general election. But we continue to go and get the petitions because we felt that it was a good way to outreach and get the community involved.
Do I have a motion to adopt resolution 2016-133?
Motion to adopt resolution 2016-133.
Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Crevel.
Yes.
Mr. Langren.
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman.
Yes.
I have resolution 2016-137. It's accepting resignation of the city solicitor.
I just want to thank Amy for your dedicated service to Venter as a Venter resident and as a city solicitor, and thank her for the transition period of myself as a city commissioner, when we were elected into office.
I would second. Thank Amy for really working through the first few months of this. We really needed that help, so we do appreciate that.
Do I have a motion to adopt resolution 2016-137?
Motion to adopt resolution 2016-137.
Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Crevel.
Yes.
Mr. Langren.
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman.
Yes.
I have bills in the total amount of $6,665,561.24, and I have payrolls from July 23, 2016 through August 19, 2016, in the total amount of $1,256,670.78 for approval.
The bills have to be amended to include $13,770 to bring the total to $6,8261.24, but three outstanding invoices to Jersey professional management. The timeliness of the payment should have been done already, so this needs to be amended.
The reason that those bills were not paid is the amount that was originally in cover was $2,000, and we just did a.
Last month.
Last month. She said you didn't get it back yet. There was a bill that we received for the deputy city clerk. The amount of that was incorrect based on the last resolution, and the resolution is being amended in this region. So, as soon as that's done, again, saved already, that will be paid. So, those bills will be on the next.
We need them paid.
They will be paid.
All right. So, yes, I want to amend this. I want it to be included in this bill package.
Are the amounts correct, though? You said something about the amount being correct.
I don't have the amount right here because I was not aware of the addition to it before I came up here.
And you're waiting for, are you waiting for something back?
Yes.
You're waiting for payment work back from the company?
Yes.
Okay.
And I called the company, actually. I left a couple of messages. I spoke with someone at the company once. I told them that the amount on the invoice was incorrect because it was billed at $110. The resolution said $100. So, I called to find out what the correct amount was. She never called me back. She said she would ask and call me back. I called again and left a message. No one called me back. That's why those bills are not paid.
Okay, so we, can we get this resolved tomorrow?
It will be resolved. It's in the, it's in the works. I already did the search based on the resolution in this meeting to pay that amount. So, because it doesn't fit into the timeframe that that bill list covers, is why we'll adopt and include it in that bill list.
So, we have to wait until next?
So, they will, they will.
They will, they will. So, we have this one, but they're not, we paid the amount, we paid.
Yeah, because this bill list covers up till today. Even if the check was issued tomorrow, it would be.
Be in the next bill. Okay, so we don't amend this, don't you?
We're not amending it.
Okay.
We're going to. So, do I have a motion to approve the bills and payrolls as red?
Motion to approve bills and payrolls as red.
Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Crevel.
Yes.
Mr. Langren.
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman.
Yes.
I.
As typical at the end of our agenda, we have the 116 announcements and remarks. It's the JIF Safety Committee report. I'm not going to read through that whole thing. Safety Committee met on August 10th, and those are the following items that were raised at that, at that meeting.
Roll over onto the public session now. Anyone has anything that would like to break to our attention?
I'd love to have one. Welcome to West Side Avenue. I wanted to ask about the food bank truck that used to come to Dorset Avenue. Is that going to discontinue?
It hasn't been discontinued. What happened, this got, was there was residents in the, the BFW had an agreement with the Atlantic County Food Bank, so it was, the city was not involved in any way. And from what I understand, there were a lot of residents in that area that posed questions to the people that ran the BFW because the people that went there for the food bank were sitting on their, yeah, their properties. They were sitting on their steps. They were knocking on their doors and asking them to use their bathroom. They were doing things like that. So, from what I understand, the BFW didn't, they took the food bank, they were no longer allowed to use or park on it. Along with that, I think their actual truck size was a lot larger, so it really wasn't the right place. One of the Venter residents that, tears, she is trying to find another place on city property, and the last night, what I had suggested was back near, behind Sawall Fields. The truck would be able, it's a street where there's no homes. One side is marshes, the other side is ball fields. And they come in the morning, so even during the ball season, there's no activity there, and there is enough room for the truck to pull up. So, but that is still up in the air right now, but.
There's really no public transportation back there?
Well, no, there, the same public transportation, the same public transportation that the guys at the BFW, the only difference is they would get dropped off right there on Dorset Avenue by the 505 bus. They would get dropped off on Wellington. Say, they stop at every block, Somerset, Subfo, Saratoga, and they would just have to walk down a few blocks. They originally wanted Sea Beach, but we didn't think that was the right, the right area because it is surrounded by a lot of resident, you know, homes. So, we thought it would be best, so we don't have future problems, especially once it becomes part of, that they're occupying part of the city property, and we recommended you have the ball field. But like I said, originally, we had nothing to do with the BFW and the food bank. We're involved now, and at least for us to be able to provide an area that won't affect the residents and will still be able to serve these people.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I wanted to ask about, we haven't had a big downturn in a long time, but how did the Venter Garden Plaza pump do less bar train fall when there was?
It's fully operational now. We haven't really had one tested quite yet. The last time we had a heavy blast, like, pretty hard, I don't think we had the issues this morning, so. The last time that we had a heavy rainfall, not all pumps were running. We had issued one, there was three pumps there.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
We had issued one of the pumps, so it was not all the way up and running. There's a meeting there the next few days with the contractor to go over some of the issues that we're having, so.
Does that also mean the sewers are cleaned out?
That has nothing to do with sanitary sewer.
Pardon?
That pump has nothing to do with the sanitary sewer. That pump is for storm, for storm drain.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hi, Karen. Dave Berman, 404 Berkshire Drive. This came to my attention that we don't have any set policy on people renting homes through Airbnb, short-term rentals. Are you aware of this?
Yes.
We actually have an ordinance being written now that will change from a seasonal CO to a change of tenant CO.
That would be allowed?
It would be, you'd have to get inspections, so we would have knowledge when it happens. Not necessarily Airbnb, this is for anyone, weekly rentals, anything of that nature. The problem we run into is, probably when it came to our attention, was a beach block home was rented out to 15 college kids for a week. You know, the neighbors were not happy with the noise that was there, but we had no way to go after it that way. Now, if they're registered, we have a home inspection when they come in. When the next tenant comes in, we have a home inspection, we have a fee that the owner has to pay. So, we're trying to track that. We don't yet have something that has addressed the Airbnb yet, but we're moving in that direction to at least get something where we have some control and some checks and balances for that system.
Okay, I'm glad that something's being done and.
It came to our attention, I think, the first week of August, that someone called us about, that it was an issue with beach block housing. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Priscilla Gray, Goodrich South Bridgers. One thing, it came to my attention this morning that yard sale is Saturday, and so is the cleanup. Guess who won't be at the club?
It's okay.
One of my neighbors was asking about the fountain. This came up years ago, and it's kind of a moving point, maybe. The fountain on the night out, would somebody say, you know, wouldn't it be nice if they had flowers in there?
Well, no. We're going to be up and running. I hope it's going to be up and running for that night. We're having trouble getting the, we have a pump, we have to get contractor into Cali Electric. They're giving us a price to reattach that, reconnect that pump to electric, and then we have to seal the bottom of that fountain again. But it's, it's working. It's holding water, which is.
Really?
First step, which is good. It shouldn't have needed to hold water.
I know, it had been discussed years back, and there wasn't money, and it was going to be a very expensive option.
Not that. It's, I think we're.
The fountain by the electric?
By the electric. It's about $1,500 for the electric and about another $500 for the paint ceiling, the paint bottom, so.
Michael, I remember.
Yes, Michael, I remember it. It helped us with, quite.
I don't remember that.
Okay, anyhow, we would be loved if it worked. The other thing, I miss the meetings of the changing, possibly four lanes to two lanes. I think that would be crazy. I mean, say, the intention is good. Safe, I think the main issue is, we have boardwalk for the bikes. If you want to go to bike lane, Marquise does it, he goes to four lanes. If you put one lane each way, I understand the danger of pedestrian, maybe they need to amend the law. Some pedestrians almost seem to flaunt the power stepping out of.
On the downer?
Yes.
I think it maybe needs to be amended, that they need to see both ways, half a block or a block each way before they step off the curb, so that other people can see them. To bring it down to two lanes, Longport, they don't want people down there and have works for them. We're close to Atlantic City. There's a tremendous amount of traffic. You get behind somebody who's looking for an address, and, I mean, we could be nuts. We're nuts.
Pushing City, put it in place, I believe, two summers ago, and it works. It's a.
What street is it down?
I think it's the one.
Westy?
Westier Ocean.
One of the main ones.
I have to find. One of their main drags through town, parallel to their boardwalk, and it's a much safer road to drive on, to.
And does the traffic move adequately?
It moves adequately, certainly. The lights are timed better, and that's all part of what we look at. The lights are being timed better, so you move through the city a little bit quicker. Actually, one of the resolutions we passed tonight was to get some funding for, to do just that, the lights, some of the improvements that we talked about. The report that we got, that was just suggestions, had a lot of suggestions. It had bike paths all over the city, bike lanes and bike paths. So, we would look to implement some of those. Some of them are very expensive. Redim Atlantic Avenue, but that costs a significant amount of money. Venter Avenue as well, we would look to put bike paths on there, mainly to stop people from thinking that it's a four-lane road in its own right.
Right, there are certain areas where it really is tempting, and it looks like.
Absolutely.
Yes, yes.
So, we haven't made a final decision on it. We think, and I was speaking for the mayor and Commissioner Crevel, that the road diet is what it's called, going down from four down to two lanes in one direction and a center turning lane, is a good, safe idea for that roadway. We have to do a traffic study on it yet to see how it would impact the roadway, and I drive it every day in Atlantic City here at work, so I certainly don't want to go from my 15-minute ride to a half hour just to get to Atlantic City. I don't want to do that.
Even 25 minutes in that road?
Well, but the goal of it is to be a safer roadway for pedestrians, bicyclists, and vehicles.
I would like to see them explore the sinking in the lights first and also making pedestrians as responsible as motors.
That, that makes.
You know, it's. Well, being, we feel we'll probably take a lot longer than we would like, unfortunately. You know, I wouldn't jump at it.
Right.
Like you say, if there was a street, I would check on those.
If you missed the study, I can send it to you, Priscilla.
I would appreciate that.
And there's a compelling video that says give both sides of the road diet story that is, it's very interesting, so I'll send it.
I would love to see it.
Not only the sinking, but also allowing pedestrians more time to get across the street is one of the things that they studied to hold back, to keep the safety in mind. But I will send.
I would appreciate it. You're welcome.
Talking about bike safety. Sometimes I drive in Philadelphia, and it's crazy there with the bike lanes that they have, where the bicyclists don't pay any attention to any traffic signals. Any stop signs, any traffic lights, they go the wrong way on one-way streets. You're putting these bike lanes in the same areas that we have traffic and pedestrians, where we have bicyclists, bicyclists that don't really pay any attention to any road safety. Is there going to be an effort to ticket these bicyclists?
Bicyclists are irresponsible, the same rules the road as vehicles are. Did you see the, did you go to the presentation or see the videos?
No, I didn't. I missed it.
So, a lot of those questions are answered. I have your emails well on. I can send you the presentation and the video. It is meant to make a distinction between the idea of a road, which is a connection between two highly trafficked areas, like the Black Horse Pike, and a street, which is a residential conveyance. And I think that's part of the problem, that we allow the street to define what it is rather than as a city define what the street is, and it's become a hazard, albeit in certain periods of the year, but it's a study worth really reviewing yourself so you can see that they did look at every single angle of safety for pedestrians and vehicles. Highland Road Diet actually reduces the amount of opportunities for accidents in half, and they studied.
Okay, I understand the bike paths. I live off Lafayette Avenue, and a lot of kids go to the schoolyard to play, and they ride four across, taking a whole street.
So, by that measure, they did, as part of the study, shows Lafayette Avenue with bike lanes on both sides. They would encourage them to follow the law, especially near school.
And if they don't follow the law, what's the ramifications?
If an officer sees someone breaking the law, they're responsible.
They're going to ticket these young children?
Parents are there. What happens? The parents, the parents.
Actually, what happens, the parents could find for that. What part of the whole process is, is an educational process as well. It's not just, here, we'll throw this road out there, we'll throw these bike paths out there, that's what we'll do. It's an entire educational process. Go to the schools, we'll have presentations here. This isn't the last you're going to hear of this. There's going to be more meetings on it, more defined what we're going to actually do, so keep listening.
I'd encourage you to learn, to learn more about the actual study, and I can send you the PowerPoint presentation and the video where it's used in Lindbergh with a lot of success.
going to take place here, that's hard to tell in the future, but, and that makes it more dangerous, not only for the cyclists, but also for the pedestrians walking across the street, because they don't stop for pedestrians either, and, and for the drivers, I mean, you know, our liability in dealing with these cyclists, so, I'm just wondering.
They're breaking the law, but not our liability. If, if the bicyclists are not following the law, they're their own liability, not ours.
I understand.
So, we can't tell you that, that yes, we're going to write tickets to every person that breaks the law on bike, we don't write tickets to every person that speeds down that gap, we're going to look into this more, we're going to pursue making our roads safer, and hopefully that, you know, the educational part that brings a lot of these things to light, and educates people on their bicycles. I see it every day, bicyclists don't follow the traffic lights.
Well, right now, Margate has lanes.
Right.
And I see cyclists crossing Venter Avenue against the light, non-stopping against the stop signs.
Right.
And nothing's being done, so, I'm just wondering, you know, where's the education of, you know, teaching?
As an advocate, this program is for both of these cities, we've both got the grant together, it's an educational program, you're not going to stop everybody from breaking the law.
Okay.
If, if that happened, we wouldn't need cops.
Okay, I understand.
We can try.
We can try, that's all we need to do.
Hi, Mary Puketta, 221 North Wyoming, I would just like to thank the city of Venter for allowing the pier to be open yesterday for the airshow, it was great, there was a lot of people up there, everybody had a good time, and also, there was police presence up there, they kept everything calm, not that there was any problems, but it was nice to see everybody out there in force, so, would just like to thank you for that.
Wow, I agree, yeah.
You know, it's open on Sunday to, to everyone?
Yeah.
In all of us?
Yes, very much.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Close the public session?
Motion. Sorry, second. And we need to go into executive session. New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act permits the discussion of certain matters within an executive session. As an, as an exception to the certain provisions of said law, the Venter City Board of Commissioners wishes to discuss certain matters which qualifies exceptions in executive session. No actions binding upon Board of Commissioners will be taken within executive session, and discussions conducted in a closed session will be disclosed to the public when legally permitted, and when the public interest will no longer be served by keeping such matters confidential. Matters to be discussed are personal professional services contracts.